City Council meeting for Monday, March 26th. If we could have a roll call to establish quorum. Madam Clerk?
Terry McLuhan.
I'm here.
Mickey Schneider.
I'm over here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Melissa Green.
I'm here.
Kristy Kendrick.
Here.
And David is absent with notice. We have five.
All right, please stand and have a pledge of allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Follow.
Second.
Any additions?
Yes, sir.
I want to speak to a couple of procedural concerns from last meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add a quick, short discussion on this upcoming trash tax. And if at all possible, if we could do that first, because there might be a time involvement.
I'm sorry, what?
And if we could put that on for number one, because there might be a time involvement. Okay. I'll second that.
You want to move that to number one, first order of the business?
Yeah, because it won't take long, but there could be time involved.
You are talking about new business, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Number one, a new business, the ordinance for paying down bond payments. Should we defer that until Mr. Mitchell gets back?
What?
Oh. I thought we were doing... We don't have to.
It's up to the council. You want to defer it until Mr. Mitchell comes back?
I don't think it's necessary.
I just noticed that there wasn't an amortization attached to it. Is that ready?
Well, I don't know whether... I'll have to ask Mr. Clark. Do we need the amortization? Is that part of the ordinance here? I don't remember.
Well, I had it scheduled that you got prior to showing the proposed amortization, so I did not compare a former for this purpose.
Right. And I would like to defer it, because I know Mr. Mitchell and I both had asked for an amortization attachment.
Not much that, no.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, get a second on that, then?
Second.
Okay. If they're not hearing any other changes, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's so moved. Approval of the minutes for March 12th. Get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing done. All those in favor of the minutes as submitted, as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed. Number one.
We have a planning commission vacancy, as far as committees go, and also a hospital, and also a cemetery. So if we have any citizens out there interested in applying for those, any of those three positions, please let me know. And come in, fill out an application. Bring us to public comments.
I visited Kim today. I was trying to figure, put some figures together to find out how much water we're losing.
Could you, would you say who you are and where you live?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Harry Meyer. I live on Car Street.
Okay.
Just down the road from my friend over there. And it seems it's going to be difficult to get the number of gallons that we purchase from the district and the number of gallons that we bill out, so that we know how many gallons we're losing and how much money that is costing the city. I think that may come up to a sizable sum. And part of that, we don't know, since there aren't, there isn't a meter charge for commercial customers, you can't break out the commercial customers, because it's only in the tiers, if I understand correctly. So if a little shop just has a bathroom, they pay the same rate as a residence, which I don't think is correct. I think shops should pay a commerce... Somebody's making money off the water, using the water in their business, they should pay a higher fee than us people who just live in the city. Suggestions? Thank you.
My name is Chris Fisher. I live at 33 Ridgeway Avenue. I visited a somewhat familiar section of Lake Leatherwood Park yesterday for the first time in several years, and found that much has changed in the vicinity of Miners Rock. There are quite a few new trail segments since my days as an aid station volunteer for the Fat Tire Festival. The downhill challenge trail established by OORC volunteers, and the unfolding new activity with the current contract with Aaron Rodgers of Rock Solid Trails have certainly transformed this once-remote and underused area of the park. In all honesty, I can't understand how the decisions have been made by parks to convert this land into what can only be described as an extensive and exclusive mountain bike facility. This area is no longer a quiet section of the park. The forest floor has been crisscrossed with trails, roads, foot-worn pathways, and various access means resembling an invasive spider web. On a very visceral, personal, and emotional level, I have trouble wondering how anyone can justify this form of impact upon a place. I wonder how many ecological systems between the once-existing plants, animals, stone formations, and forest canopy have been permanently altered. I simply can't reconcile how this new activity relates to a responsibility for preserving and caring for a landscape with a well-considered approach to a development plan. My reaction was to feel violated, as the park appears quite wounded by all the hands and machines at work. How is our community able to know what this project has in store for our park? Is this process purposely moving forward in such a way that folks will not have a full understanding? It sure seems so. I would respectfully ask tonight that the city council consider creating an initiative to review the project and the full extent of plans being considered, so that we all might better accommodate the concept of how this activity can actually improve and sustain our community. The Parks Commission has not acted as proper stewards in this process. It's time for the city to step in, to visit the park, to see exactly what is underway, and to immediately assess the unfolding situation. The city deserves a better understanding of how to protect and preserve Lake Leatherwood, and to carefully consider how we might best embrace changes to all of our public green spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, this is Faith Shaw. And I would like to see a show of hands in the room of how many people have hiked out in the downhill area since it began. What do I see? Four? Okay. I know a lot of people really are in favor of this project. And on the face of things, so would I be. I really would. But I know too much. This study that Parks and Rec paid for, done by my mentor, Theo Whitzel, of the ANHC, was just published on March 4th of 2018. There are recommendations here that should frighten every single person in this room. We have globally rare species in Lake Leatherwood. We have species of conservation concern in Lake Leatherwood. And this, my friends, is a photograph of a former dolomite glade. And I'm going to give you each one a photograph of it. This is being buried in dirt and rock and making jumps for a wonderful, high-energy experience, but we lost a dolomite glade. And I really highly recommend, I think Pat sent each one of you this, I really recommend you read it page to page. I have copied page 42, 44. 44, by the way, I want to say. We took a hike on Friday with Jim Helwig. And this is a unique, unique ecological, geological feature in Lake Leatherwood. In a picture in here, there is a blue flag, meaning they're going to take bulldozers through this rare geological formation. I am not faulting the trail builders. I am faulting the process. We had him come out in November. I've highlighted things for you, where he says, "We can't properly identify things until April." The first trail that I'd like to take some credit in moving was done in an area that had absolutely no presence on any map on this. So I need more than three minutes, and I want to sit down with all of you, and I hope you'll invite me.
I can't read. We'll just wait.
Pat Costner. I live out on County Road 2663, and I hiked at Leatherwood quite a lot. And I didn't go out with Chris, but I went out with Faith and Jim Helwig. And I can tell you that it's really, really breathtaking. I've been to construction sites for buildings that didn't look quite like this. I saw areas that were 40 feet wide, that had been cleared, rumbled, stumbled, bumbled. I mean, it's not... I mean, it's like doing surgery with a hacksaw. So just bear that in mind. That's it. Now, I really came tonight to clarify one point, which is, where does the money come from? You were told, I believe, at your last meeting by Justin Huss, that it was Tom Walton. Well, I felt compelled to go to the Walton Family Foundation and ask them where the money came from. So I emailed the head of the foundation, Kyle Peterson, and he handed it off to Luis Gonzalez, who is his head of communications. And Mr. Gonzalez, in response to my question, he says, "We received your note and would like to thank you for reaching out. The foundation has provided grants to the Northwest Arkansas Trailblazers for different types of trail projects in Eureka Springs. These include everything from trails for riders with beginner skills to ones for more seasoned cyclists. Foundation grants have also supported the development of hiking trails in the area." So push comes to shove, Walton Family Foundation is funding this project. Now, I am continuing my communication with Walton Family Foundation, and have submitted questions to Mr. Gonzalez, to which he responded today. And the questions have to do with, how was this funding process? How was it done? To my reading, having looked FOIA'd a lot and looked at all the emails and text messages, it involved a Walton Family Foundation program officer approaching Parks, the Parks director, about the downhill trail. The foundation program officer, I probably can't get through this, but I can assure you that the process is anything but a normal grant-making process. Anything but. So Mr. Gonzalez says they have a team of people who are working on my question, and I expect to get a response from them by the end of the week, which I will be very happy to share with you. Thank you.
You changed your alarm.
I should have been a doctor.
Yeah, you should have been.
I should have. I wanted to be a brain surgeon. Didn't happen. In February of 2013, four of you, five of you, were sitting here when Bruce Levine came in and said, "Here is our proposal for Lake Leatherwood." In March of 2013, that tax was passed, based on that plan. That's what Kristy was trying to say to us a couple of weeks ago. "I got through your memo, through your notes." Exactly. That tax said, "We will use this money for the approved Lake Leatherwood plan." I don't know when it got changed again. I don't know how that happened. When did it happen? Nobody here's been able to answer the question. I've been sort of tracking it for a few days now. So we had a plan. Bruce Levine came in. Here's the minutes from February 2013. Bruce said, "I've got the, here's all the markings for the Leatherwood plan." In March, the sales tax passed. Based on that information, we didn't follow through. Shame on us. I'm also sorry that Parks has chosen to ask for forgiveness instead of permission, because it puts all of us at odds with each other. And life is tough enough right now without all of us being angry with each other. I know I'm pissed off. The other thing that happened in this thing is, in the executive summary of this study that was done, he only looked at one trail. There are now six. How do we do this? How does this happen, that we have six trails, no evacuation plan, no security plan? I still have not seen a budget of what it's going to cost to run this downhill bike race that may happen two or three times a year, as opposed to all of us. And while I grant you, you should be thrilled and give a resolution to Walton for giving you a million dollars. Everybody in this town has given you more than a million dollars, in blood, sweat, tears, and equity. I, myself, have almost 40 years in. My husband has 77 years and going strong. Shame on all of us. Shame on all of us for not recognizing the worth we are to each other. We asked for Leatherwood in the '95 study. When that study was done, we said, "We wanted a place for us to be that was peaceful, wonderful, and continuing on for generations." And now we have a switchblade happening out there. I have a grandson, who I know is going to love this nuisance. He is going to be dying to go down this hill. And dying might be the operative word. Thank you very much. The other thing I want to say is, when it comes to the police department, I would like to see them come in and make a quarterly report. I would like to know how many arrests are going on? What is going on in our town? Because I feel like we have a lot of robberies going on, and we're not talking about it. There's a lot of bad crime happening here, and we don't want to talk about it because of our tourists. The bottom line is, we've got to talk about it. We have to know with each other what's happening. There's so much more and so little time. I thank you. Have a lovely evening.
Hi, my name is Tracy Johnson. My conversation has actually shifted gears a little bit tonight. I have complete faith in our Parks Department. I appreciate the way it's a commission. I'm just going to leave it to them to do the job that they're trained to do. What I would like to bring up, in lieu of all these conversations that are really great points, environmental impact. Perhaps it would be a good idea if every new home builder paid for an environmental impact on the study of their land, for the trees they're cutting down, the water lines they're putting in, and to make sure that the material they're using does not have long-term effects on this community that we all live. Perhaps we need to do up-to-date environmental studies on all of the lead piping that runs through our town, the sewer systems that are always failing, and the sidewalks that are very detrimental to tourists and us as locals. So since we're bringing up all these conversations of safety, it opens up a lot of doors for me. I have, I think, every new homeowner, every home that was built before 1970, lead paints. We should all have environmental impact reports currently done on all of our property within the city limits. Thank you.
I'm Mike Shaw, and I have been here in the '70s for a little while, and I've been here since Save the Ozark started. So here's the benefit of my business experience. I think Justin's doing as much as we can expect anybody to do for a monster job. It's too much for one person, it's too much for two people. Here are some examples. First of all, the quarterly meeting's not frequent enough to see him. I've been to the park a lot since I heard about this project, and the crews are doing an excellent job without daily direction. They're moving 50 yards down these trails with just flags that can be moved. So there's no on-site management going on, because there's not enough people to manage the project. An example is, there were two tracks built in the last four weeks that had to be abandoned. One was going to have bikers jump across the access road to Lake Leatherwood, and the second one was down the hill. Visualize the Winter Olympics with all the trails coming down the mountain that we saw on television. That's what's going on in Lake Leatherwood, through these 400-million-year-old rock formations. And it's the only place in Lake Leatherwood where we can take kids and educate them about the uniqueness of Arkansas geologically. So we've got trails that are being just stuck in lines by great crews that have no management, and then they're being abandoned. We went with Jim Helwig to take a look at a sinkhole with a rescue speedlunker. And they brought all their gear. We took them up on the trail of Miners Rock, where there was a sinkhole, and there was another one on the right. We decided to go into the one on the left, so Jim goes down with all the tape and almost lands on his keister. The young guy catches him on the bottom. They have laser beams that tell them the depth of these sinkholes. Going off in the Y to the left, the most he can get is 25 yards. Going underneath the overhang, it is 75 yards. So there's no cattle guard on top of this, there's no warning sign on top of this. On the right-hand side, the sinkhole is not as inviting, because you can't really see that you could climb down into it, like this one. But they're all the same. They just are 50 yards deep, no warning signs. Thank you.
That's it? All right. Thank you, everyone, for the public comments. If we can go back to unfinished business, ordinance number 2264, diversion of grant funds on the third reading?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Motion for the third reading. Oh, I'm sorry. I make a, I make a motion for the third reading by name only, please. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Five to zero. Ordinance number 2264, an ordinance clarifying the use of funds received for grants approved by or applied for under city council authority.
Can we get a motion to approve ordinance number 2264 on this final reading?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? We need a roll call on that.
Yep. Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Five to zero.
All right, so moved. Okay, our new order, next order of business. See, Mickey, you wanted to have a short discussion on the trash?
Yes.
Trash.
I think probably everybody here knows that we, and I believe it's five other counties, I think it's six altogether, are being hit with this $18 a year trash tax in regards to anybody who owns property has to pay this. My question to the mayor is, I know Tuesdays are normally set up for department head meetings, but since there is a public meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
There's actually one tonight at 7:00.
Are you planning on going tomorrow morning?
No, I'm sending somebody.
May I ask who?
Glenn is going to be over there.
Okay. Well, you and our city attorney would, and Glenn, all three would have been great. The reason I said a time thing was because there is one at 7:00, that I understand would be more important than the one tomorrow. Would you like to go to that? We can continue on without you, or whatever. But this is really, really important to everybody. Literally, everybody in town is getting hit with this thing, and from what I've been able to read and research, it sounds awfully illegal to me, that you represent us. So is there any way you could go tonight and/or tomorrow? The department head meeting, I mean, good grief, those are every week.
We can, you know, I'd like to go ahead and see what we can get done with tonight with the rest of this meeting. I'd like to attend for the one tonight. But our, I'm not sure if we were probably with the president, I mean, with the, David being out of town, I'm not sure how that would work. So I think we need to go ahead and see what we can finish with this, and see if we can get through and see where we are.
Well, it's a bunch of resolutions. We should be able to get done pretty quick.
Let's try it.
Okay. Well, if we can get done in time, you will go tonight, right?
I will go. I'm planning on going, if we can get done soon enough.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Okay, we deferred our next order of business, ordinance for paying down the bonds. Next one is a resolution to correct the scribners' error in the ballot language.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. Any discussions? Yes, or Mr. McLuhan?
I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion that we, that we read this resolution in, for passage.
Second.
All right, yes, ma'am. Ms. Kendrick?
I would like to discuss this. It's been said that the cardinal rule for construing tax legislation is that a tax cannot be imposed except by express words indicating that purpose, and where there is an ambiguity or doubt, it must be resolved in favor of the taxpayer. I would like to pass out to this council copies of what that ballot read, so that you will have in front of you exactly the language we are discussing. in and read this ballot language, when the, when it was on the ballot, I was just, I looked at it and went, nobody can understand what this is about. It does not use the word "tax," it does not use the word "parks," and I think it was really confusing. Now you add the, the fact that it referred to the wrong ordinance number, and I think this is a really confusing ballot. I am not personally gonna presume that I understand that everybody that walked in to vote yes on, on this ballot was voting for the ballot tax. And, you know, I don't think this whole Scrivener's error thing is gonna work legally, but even apart from that, I, in good conscience, cannot substitute my understanding of what happened for, for all the voters' understanding of what they were voting for. So I'm gonna vote against this resolution.
Mickey?
Having run the elections for 22 years here in Eureka, quite often things seem very confusing, they don't seem to be quite lined up right. There have been on occasion a screw-up on numbers. The people know ahead of time, I don't know if it's just because we're a small town, or if it's because we're a very smart, small town, everybody knows how to research, and they check into things, and they talk with people, but when an issue like this comes up, they know exactly when they come in, probably, I'm gonna say, 90 to 95% of our voters, when they come in to vote on an issue, know exactly how and why they're gonna vote for or against something, because they have checked, they have researched, they have talked, they have done whatever. So regardless of any kind of strange wording and stuff like that, it doesn't make that much difference simply because they already know. They've already looked into it, they've read about it, they know if they want it or they don't, and they vote accordingly. If you accidentally write the wrong number on something, it's not that big of a deal. I don't know how it happens elsewhere, but this is just one of those things. We're human. Accidents happen. Everybody knew exactly what they were voting for, they weren't thinking they were voting for whatever the other number might have stood for. They knew what they were doing, so it's just a matter of cleaning up the page number, so to speak.
Anyone else? Hearing done. Call for a vote on the motion to read, to assign this a number and read the resolution for approval.
So moved. Second?
It's already been?
Yeah. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Four one? It will be resolution number 723. A resolution to correct Scrivener's error in ballot title of Parks tax issue voted on June 13, 2017, whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs passed ordinance number 2254, calling for an election for extension of the Parks 1/8 sales tax, and references the correct ordinance, ordinance number 2176, and whereas ordinance number 2254 and the ballot title reference the correct action to be taken if the ballot issue passed, and whereas a Scrivener's error appeared in the ballot title as used on the ballot referencing ordinance number 2178 instead of ordinance number 2176, and whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs now became aware of this error. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, the City Council of Eureka Springs recognizes the error as a Scrivener's error and seeks to correct same. Section two, the City Council of Eureka Springs requests that the city, excuse me, that the Carroll County Election Commission and the Eureka Springs City Clerk include in each's records a copy of this resolution recognizing the error as a Scrivener's error and hereby correcting the same as if the ballot title had included reference to the correct ordinance. Ordinance number 2176.
All right. See, our next item on the agenda is resolution for our Arkansas Historic Preservation Grant for the auditorium.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
We are going to be applying for the, a grant to, from the Historic Preservation Program to repair basically the back part of the auditorium, which would be the, the north side, and also the east and west. The upper 10 feet of the masonry has some mortar deterioration that are causing some issues with the roof joists back in the back, or could cause some issues. So far, there's not any signs of deterioration, but there's certainly the possibility of happening with the water coming in. So we've asked for, and also to repair the roof. Originally, we were just gonna repair the roof, and the preservation program asked us to go ahead and give a price, and recommended that we tear off the existing roof and replace the whole roof. This is, again, the back portion, not the entire section up there. It's just a portion over the proscenium up there. So the grant from, matching of the $28,145 will be matched from the Eureka Springs City Advertising and Promotion Commission, and then the grant itself, it's $56,289, bringing the total to $84,434. Mr. McClung?
Two things. One, the, the CAPC is participating in that fund, not, it's one half.
Right.
And then, and the city, the other half. The other is, 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 are the dollars there to complete the project?
Yes. If we get, if we get the grant, we can do it. Okay. Any further?
That was, we can do all of it? That's elevator, bathroom, everything?
No, this is just for the grant for the roof and the masonry work.
Just the repair, okay. Wait, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Kendrick?
I'm confused from within the, whereas, to me, when I read it, it sounded like the CAPC was gonna pay $28,000, the grant was $56,000 for a total of $84,000.
Actually, that was my understanding, too.
So what, what does the city pay?
That's not correct.
CAPC didn't do the $28,000?
No, sir.
That was my understanding.
I think we only approved half of that amount. I'm pretty sure, I mean, you can check the, check the minutes and check the office tomorrow, but I think that, that it was a, that was, it was the intention, the understanding by CAPC is gonna be a crockery.
My understanding, what I got from Mike, was that they were, from Rick, was the total amount of $28,000.
I could remember it incorrectly, and I don't think I do, but, but I could be wrong.
I mean, if it's wrong, well, I mean, I'll just come back, but right now, it's the CAPC's, is putting up the $28,000. It's what, the word that I got on there, it wasn't coming out of the city, city budget. So I'll double-check, but that's the way it is, according to all I know. Any other questions?
So postponed?
No, I mean, I don't know, Mr. McClung, you wanna defer this then, until then, and verify that?
Well, that's your call. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
If, if the city, if that's true, I'll just come back with another resolution. If it's not, let's go ahead and pass this resolution as such.
Fine, fine.
Okay. So if I can get a motion to assign this a number and read it for approval.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So moved. Go ahead, go ahead. I wasn't so moved.
Okay. Ms. Green made a, made a motion, and Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I second it.
Seconded it, true. All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Five zero, the resolution number will be 724. A resolution authorizing the application for an acceptance of historic preservation and restoration grant to perform repairs to the auditorium for the city of Eureka Springs, whereas the city of Eureka Springs is applying for an Arkansas Historic Preservation Program grant for $84,434 to fund repairs to the auditorium, consisting of re-roofing the north side and cleaning and/or waterproofing the upper masonry, and whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs understands that this Arkansas Historic Preservation Program grant is a matching grant with $28,145 matching coming from the Eureka Springs City Advertising and Promotion Commission, and the grant itself of $56,289 to bring the total to $84,434. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city of Eureka Springs mayor is hereby authorized on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs to apply for, and if awarded, accept, the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program grant for the purpose of funding the repairs to the auditorium, and that the mayor is further authorized to administer, administer the grant funds for the same project.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
On that line, did you get numbers, or wasn't it supposed to be this week, this meeting for the numbers for the?
Oh, I'm, I'm working on, but we won't be getting those numbers for quite a while.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
First of all, we had to get some drawings done before we can even get through there.
So it won't, wouldn't even be ready for the next week?
No. I don't think so.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is another resolution for a historic preservation grant for the cemetery.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
All right, we got another preservation grant that's gonna be submitted to the state historic, Arkansas Historic Preservation Program for $12,499 to fund a long-range conservation program at the cemetery. This will be a match coming $2,000 from the Cemetery Commission and a $500 coming from the Eureka Springs Preservation Society, so, plus the grant of $9,999, which will bring a total grant of $12,449. And again, this is a resolution to proceed with the grant application and going through. So, any questions and discussion?
If I can make a motion that we assign this resolution a number and read it for passing.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Five zero. Resolution number 725. A resolution authorizing the application for an acceptance of a historic preservation and restoration grants to fund long-range conservation for the city of Eureka Springs Cemetery, whereas the city of Eureka Springs is applying for an Arkansas Historic Preservation Program grant for $12,499 to fund a long-range conservation program at the Eureka Springs Cemetery, and whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs understands that this Arkansas Historic Preservation Program grant is a matching grant with $2,000 matching coming from the Eureka Springs Cemetery Commission and $500 matching coming from the Eureka Springs Preservation Society, and the grant itself of $9,999, bringing the total to $12,499. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city of Eureka Springs mayor is hereby authorized on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs to apply for, and if awarded, accept, the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program grant for the purpose of funding the long-range conservation project for the Eureka Springs Cemetery, and that the mayor is further authorized to administer the grant funds for the same project.
All right. All right, our next item is, get a motion to discuss about procedures. Mr. Thomas?
Actually, I'd be willing to defer to this till next meeting.
Okay. You get a second on that?
Second?
Did we defer the resolution acknowledging the trails' benefactor?
Yes, I'm sorry, that was deferred, yes, we don't have that resolution yet, so that's, that's been deferred until our next meeting. Item number five.
One of my procedural concerns involves that resolution, so I would hope that when, in the next meeting, the discussion of the procedural concerns could come before the discussion of the resolution.
You can set it up that way.
We can do that. All those in favor, defer on that until our next meeting, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That brings us to agenda setting. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add a discussion of the North Main Mill Hollow parking lot.
Second?
And also, what's brought up in public comments, could we have a discussion of a police quarterly report?
We do distribute those reports.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah. You two haven't been on the council very long, so we do get, we give council copies of those reports with a rest and all that, on that, so. Ms. Snyder?
I don't know if this would be on the agenda, or if it'd be scheduling a workshop, but the more we get into this stuff, the more it seems we have got to sit down, we the council, have to sit down with not only Justin, but with concerned people, and hash all this environmental stuff out. I know, I've talked with Justin, and, and some of it makes sense and some doesn't, so I don't know if this should be a workshop, or if we should ask him to come to the next meeting and we can all talk, but then the people can't really ask questions, and, so I'm not sure. What do you think? I think it should be a workshop.
Except to council. Okay.
Justin's gonna come to our next meeting. Maybe we can talk to him then about setting up a workshop? How does that sound?
That, that would work. That will work. He is on what, for what purposes?
The night.
No, for what?
The plans for the Parks Greenhouse.
Okay.
Chairman? Yes? I miss, Melissa, your thing about the police department, because you kinda got cut off.
Oh, oh, he said, I just haven't been on long enough to get my report.
But were you wanting reports to the council at the meeting?
Public. You guys know, we don't know. Sorry. Do we wanna put a discussion of that on?
No, we can go ahead, and, I mean, we can just give the, you know, make the reports when we get them to the public. That's no problem.
Okay. Going back to the environmental thing, and Justin coming, well, Justin, if Justin is coming to discuss the greenhouse, that's an agenda item, but there is not an agenda item for him to discuss this whole development, you know, I had hoped, I had hoped at one point, they would tell the council about this project and what it consisted of.
That's just saying a workshop.
It would be very nice if we could have a report from Parks about this project.
Could we have a discussion?
Which could include a discussion, which could include a discussion of the environmental concerns.
But that's why I suggested a workshop.
Wait, we're trying to set an agenda here, please. If you want, if somebody wants to make a motion for an agenda item?
I would like to make a motion that the Parks Commission report to the council about this project, whatever it may be called, that they, that Rock Solid is working on.
Make it in great detail.
And not simply about, not, in great detail. Not a single page with an aerial showing the, the trails, but I would like to know everyone's involvement.
All right, let's have Justin come and discuss the Parks project.
Okay.
That was a motion.
Okay.
Is there?
For the agenda.
Second.
I don't know if this would be on the agenda, or if it'd be scheduling a workshop, but the more we get into this stuff, the more it seems we have got to sit down, we the council, have to sit down with not only Justin, but with concerned people and hash all this environmental stuff out. I know, I've talked with Justin, and it, some of it makes sense and some doesn't, so I don't know if this should be a workshop, or if we should ask him to come to the next meeting and we can all talk, but then the people can't really ask questions, and, so I'm not sure. What do you think?
I think it should be a workshop.
Except to council. Okay.
Justin's going to come to our next meeting.
Maybe we can talk to him then about setting up a workshop?
How does that sound? That would work.
That will work.
He is on, what, for what purposes?
The night.
No, for what?
The plans for the Parks Greenhouse.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
I, I miss, Melissa, your thing about the police department, because you kind of got cut off.
Oh, oh, he said, I just haven't been on long enough to get my report.
But were you wanting reports to the council at the meeting?
Public. You guys know, we don't know. Sorry. Do we want to put a discussion of that on?
No, we can go ahead, and, I mean, we can just give the, you know, make the reports when we get them to the public. That's no problem.
Okay. Going back to the environmental thing, and Justin coming, well, Justin, if Justin is coming to discuss the greenhouse, that's an agenda item, but there is not an agenda item for him to discuss this whole development, you know, I had hoped, I had hoped at one point, they would tell the council about this project and what it consisted of.
That's just saying a workshop.
It would be very nice if we could have a report from Parks about this project.
Could we have a discussion?
Which could include a discussion, which could include a discussion of the environmental concerns.
But that's why I suggested a workshop.
We're trying to set an agenda here, please. If you want, if somebody wants to make a motion for an agenda item?
I would like to make a motion that the Parks Commission report to the council about this project, whatever it may be called, that they, that Rock Solid is working on.
Make it in great detail.
And not simply about, not, in great detail. Not a single page with an aerial showing the trails, but I would like to know everyone's involvement.
All right, let's have Justin come and discuss the Parks project.
Okay.
That was a motion.
Okay. For the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any other agenda?
I hope not.
All right, now bring any council comments. Ms. Green?
I went out yesterday, and Mr. Fisher and his wife were nice enough to take me to the top, and I got to see it, and I would really hope each and every one of the council members at one time would go up and look at it. It's beautiful, it's stunning, it's very intense, extensive, there's just a lot of questions to answer on it, but, so I hope everybody will take one of these people I've offered and go up there.
Ms. Snyder, you've got anything else?
Okay, oh, Mr. Mayor, one other thing, could we put this discussion of the project before the endor, the resolution endorsing it? It, it seems more logically, the order, that would be more logical.
We can do that.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
It's quarter to seven, are you going to be able to make the meeting?
Let's go.
Then I don't have a comment.
Mr. Thomas?
No comment.
No comment, no.
Mr. McClung?
No, sir.
Just remember, you are representing our people.
Well, I have been involved with this, and it's very frustrating. This is something that the bankruptcy court has laid upon the community. There is another meeting that's maybe just more important, I'm not sure what Senator King or Representative Ballinger is going to be able to do, since it's a court-ordered fee that they've imposed on all the citizens. There is another meeting Wednesday, I believe at 2:00, that the Ozark Mountain Solid Waste Committee is going to be holding in Berryville at the Community Center. There you will probably get more information about this whole incident. This is something that started a long time before I became involved as mayor, but I can say that Carroll County only participated in the Ozark Mountain Solid Waste, I want to say for a month or two months before we withdrew, so we weren't even involved hardly any, so we don't, I'm just as upset and mad as anybody, and Mayor McKinney and I both were totally against doing anything, but this is something that the courts ordered to be done, over and beyond.
What would the courts do if absolutely everybody refused to pay it? Take us all to court and jail?
I don't know.
I mean, let them go for it, you know?
It will come, it will get paid one or the way, the other. So anyway, I'm going to find out, see what Senator Byron, or Senator King has to say, and I'm pretty sure that Representative Ballinger is also reacting pretty much in the same thing.
Well, either you, or maybe you could have Kim email us, whatever info you end up with.
All right. Also, I want to note that the city's also, though, has enjoined, and this is something the public may want to do, in regarding to this, it sounds logical to me, it's a class action suit. The city can't do a suit, they, you know, the citizens can do a class action or start one. But we did join the municipal league and 200 other Arkansas cities in a class action litigation in the opioid epidemic. This class action is being brought by the municipal legal defense program, the Association of Arkansas Counties and the Arkansas Public Entities Risk Management Association. There being 1.7 million opioid prescriptions were issued in Arkansas for, for the 2.9 million people in our state in 2017, and the epidemic is hitting every facet of our communities, from public safety to health care to individuals and families' life being torn apart. And this class action is one way that we might stem the flow of opioids into this and our neighborhood's community. So that's just for your information, that we've participated in. As far as events, April the 7th is Diversity Week in April 2018, from 10:00 to 4:00 in the Basin Park, and that evening is drumming in the park from 6:00 to 8:00 in the Basin Park. That's all I have.
Go to the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? So moved. Thank you all.
Run.